Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we have an agenda. If one of you gentlemen would like to take that first item in business.
I'll take that then. Number one is a request by Jason Grimm to purchase a city-owned lot located adjacent to 157 University Avenue for $2,000 with a development agreement.
Second. Motion second on that item. Noel, do you want to give us a little highlight on that? Or is that Chris? Or tell us about that?
The applicant's on his way down to talk about this if he had any questions. But as soon as to what we originally had, I put both of these on the agenda. The second item was First Baptist Church and Embark. Originally, First Baptist and Embark wanted to enter into a long-term lease, or not lease agreement, but a garden plot agreement for all five lots. However, Jason Grimm has been wanting to build a garage there for some time. So I was just talking with Meg, and it sounds like that the garden group is okay with selling that lot next to Jason Grimm's house, and they'll garden the rest of it.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. Land sale policy, how does this fare out with that?
He is offering $2,000. The assessed value was...
Four thousand.
Four thousand nine sixty. However, the applicant's building about a $20,000-$25,000 garage on the property. And based on the taxes generated, it gets, it's not, it doesn't get you all the way there, but I think with the taxes generated, I think the lot's worth like maybe about three. But he is willing to sign a development agreement to build that garage on that site within two years.
It's not a real desirable lot to build on anyway, the way I saw it.
No. Yeah, it's only got a 16-foot wide alley access, and it fronts University Avenue, which is extremely busy.
Yeah, I have no problem with it.
I don't either, Mr. Chairman.
So Chris, he owns the property like at 155?
He lives at 157.
Oh, he lives at 157.
Yeah, he lives at 157.
Oh, Jason, I'm sorry. Gotcha. All right.
So we're taking these separate, like, I mean, we're just talking about the request by Grimm first before we address the church.
Correct. I just wanted both on there at the same time.
Okay.
To give both parties a chance to discuss it, but...
I understand.
Meg said that the group has no problem with selling that lot and gardening the rest.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This request, we're requesting that we approve it and move it forward to full council. Is that right, Chris?
Correct. Anybody have anything else? Seeing none in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We'll move that along. Somebody like to take number two?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a request by First Baptist Church and Embark, ethnic minorities of Vermont Advocacy and Resource Center to garden five, well now it's four, correct, Chris? To garden four. Mr. Chairman, we can go ahead and insert that?
I would assume so, Kelly.
Five, four in rather than five. To garden four city-owned parcels located between 133 and whatever the next address is.
Yeah, the only next address would be Jason's house. So it would be between the lot that you just approved to sell and 133.
Okay. Between 133 and 157 University Avenue.
I'll second that.
Well, a motion a second on that request. Questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I really have to hand it to these people that are doing the garden there on West Forest Street, how resourceful they are that they can take sticks and make offense. I have to really commend them for doing that. But I am hearing that after the harvest is made, that people are not very happy with what it looks like after the crops are out.
I've heard that too.
So here again, I would ask that, I would agree to this, but they have to clean up the lot after the harvest. That would be my stipulation to it. And I think we need to talk to the people on West Forest Street to do the same. I realize that's not part of this...
Right, right.
...meeting, but anyway.
Mr. Morrissey, do you have anything to add?
Well, isn't somebody from Embark?
Yeah, we can absolutely make sure that after everybody's done gardening for the season, that things look nice and that it's, you know, not an eyesore in any way. I think that that should be absolutely fine.
Can I get your name?
I'm Meg, sorry. I'm Meg. I'm with you and I Local Food. But today, I am representing the Community Producers Workshop. Thank you.
So Chris, is that something you can add to whatever agreement it is you're putting together?
Yes, the current garden agreement already stipulates that it must be kept mowed and picked up at all times. So it's already in the agreement that Chris and I put together.
Because the one, the gardens on Forest Street and on Sunnyside, the city isn't involved in those. Those are privately owned. So not that that's a reason that you don't have to clean it up, but I'm just saying we're, you know, we've got two different things going on here. So that'd be part of the agreement there. Excuse me, go ahead.
I was just asking, how, excuse me, how long is this agreement? One year, two year?
They want a minimum of two years. They'd like more than that, but a minimum of two.
We go to three.
Right. So I think we're willing to go to three years.
Okay, what if somebody comes along, wants to build a house there?
Right.
Or build anything there?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. And generally, that's why we go with the one-year one. At the same time, we recognize these are more difficult to build on lots. So obviously, anything we start to work on this area will probably take us a couple of years. So we feel pretty comfortable with the three-year, if council is. And again, that's what the city attorney's office has noted. We can use, we can go to three years without having a hearing or a longer process on it. So we're fine with a three-year if that'll work for the parties.
Could we add something in there in the event of an opportunity that we could bail after two? Or I wouldn't say in the middle of a season, but once a season is over?
That was actually kind of the wording we normally have in there. It's normally a shorter process than that. And what me and Chris have discussed is having that in the after the harvest or something like that, as if there was something, we could get out of it sooner than that.
It's a tough area to develop. It does awful high visibility too, but it seems like sooner or later.
Yep.
So everybody's good with that?
I am.
Okay, all in favor of that item, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That's approved.
Motion for adjournment.
A second. Motion second for adjournment. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're both, thank you.
Let's call our Human Resources Committee to order. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Lind.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda as proposed.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the agenda. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion passes if someone would take the first one.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request from the Director of Waste Management Services Department to begin the recruitment process for plant maintenance mechanic and to make an appointment from civil service list.
Second. Motion a second on this request. Do you need any discussion or information on this?
A law review, please.
Okay. Steve?
Sorry. Steve Holmbraker, Waste Management Services Director. This is the plant maintenance mechanic, right?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry. So what do you want to know? This was a position we recently promoted an individual, and we're trying to fill his position. So you'll give us a complement of, what is it, six mechanics? Right. Yep. I don't know how much more you want me to elaborate.
Can you kind of just tell us a little bit about the day-to-day, what this position does?
Okay, our maintenance mechanics are responsible for maintaining the various pumps, motors, et cetera, at the wastewater plant, as well as the right around 60 lift stations out in the system. So that's our main focus. And I think when I remember doing the budget presentation, we had like 461 different pumps, motors, and stuff that they had to maintain. And if we don't properly maintain and put the time in, do the proper preventive maintenance, we'll have more ongoing expenditures with the operations down the road.
As we have continued to improve our whole setup from the EPA decree, we, don't we have less need for some of these things because we put in more large fixed pumps and things like that, so we don't have near the mobile temporary, got to run over here, got to run over there because of an event situation? Now, maybe you can't, you weren't here a couple of years ago, so maybe you're unable to compare.
Since 2008, I know that we've added, I don't know the exact number, but we've added four or five different permanent lift stations. So in the past, when we'd fight those areas with a flood, we'd use the portable pumps, which essentially are maintained by fleet maintenance. So we've actually added assets to the, to our contribution of things we have to maintain. And so it's actually more equipment than we had prior to 2008 to physically be in the field to maintain.
So it was a different department that took care of those mobile pumps, is what you said?
In terms of the maintenance, when we did that repair and maintenance, and, I mean, basically, it's a matter of servicing them. And the maintenance garage came out and does that servicing of those pumps on a regular routine basis.
So that's not your people?
Not to take care of those. I mean, we utilize them, but that's not our people's responsibility.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. We need a roll call, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Yeah, the motion passes. I'm going to take number two. Mr. Chairman. Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve a request from the Director of Waste Management Services Department to begin the recruitment process for ICT foreman and to make an appointment from the civil service list.
Second.
Give a motion a second on this request. Any questions or discussion on this position?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question.
Mr. Lind?
Could we take those two boxes, the plant maintenance foreman and instrument tech foreman, and combine them into one position? Have we ever looked at that possibility?
You asking me or the chairman? Just kidding. Thanks. The answer to that is yes. And as we continue to evaluate and work with our very staff, there's enough differences amongst what those two entities do, albeit they do work real closely together with everything. The ICT is maintaining the electrical controls and all the instrumentation controls and stuff like that. That is something that's been considered, but to date, it's been decided that because of the differences of the two, we need to keep them as two separate foremen and two separate groups.
But it's something we could look at in the future, maybe?
It is. I mean, it's something that I've had discussions with my staff. If we were going to make, to do any kind of level or merging, that would be potentially one possibility. Because, I mean, as you can see by the org chart, there are only three ICT foremen. And so it's not a big work group, but as we've continued to evaluate and look at everything, it's felt that the two need to be separate and maintain separate foreman positions over them at this point in time.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, if we were to combine those two, we would save over $61,000.
Probably at least that. I mean, if you look at the wages, I mean...
And there's somewhat, somewhat related areas here, so it'd be very conceivable that one foreman could supervise both small crews.
Again, I'd be lying if that wasn't a possibility, because they are working on things in similar, different aspects of everything, but they are working on similar things at the lift station. One's taking care of the controls, one's taking care of the pumps and the motors. So are they working in same areas? Absolutely. But the technology to do one over the other is definitely different. I mean, I say the technology, but the capabilities of one group over the other group. One can't do what the other one, but...
But we're talking about the foreman position?
Right.
That would supervise the folks that do both separate functions.
Correct.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. We need a roll call, please.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Welper?
Yes. Okay, the motion passes.
Motion adjourned. Second?
Motion a second on adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Let's call our Finance Committee to order. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Mr. Jacobs? Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd move the approval of the agenda, approval of the minutes for May 22nd as proposed.
Motion a second on the agenda and minutes. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion passes. Somebody would take the first six items under new business?
Mr. Chairman, I'll take those, I guess. LeAnn Evans, Deputy Clerk, to attend a class Municipal Professional Academy 2017 in Ames, Iowa, dates July 26th through 28th, amount not to exceed $386. Abraham Funtjes, Jr., Executive Director, Rebecca Johnson, Human Rights Specialist, and Shelley Burke, Administrative Secretary, meeting in the 2017 EEOC Equal Opportunity Commission, the FEPA Federal Employment Partnership Agency Conference, destination Cleveland, Ohio, dates July 17th through 21st, 2017, with a total cost not to exceed $4,722. And then do the refund request for 1427 Patton Avenue for garbage container fees paid on a vacant property. Also, a refund request at 605 Bell Street, garbage container fee on a vacant property. Refund request at 312 Lester Street for garbage container fees paid in excess due to a billing error. Refund request as well for 806 Prairie Metal Court for garbage container fee paid on a vacant property.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the first items under new business. Any questions on any of those items? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion passes. Pre-oths?
Mr. Chairman, pre-oths to expend over $1,000. Center for the Arts, $1,400 advertising with Lamar, which is four billboards to promote STEM and STEAM. Central Garage, $1,075. Purchase GTT 795 AH emitter, cultural and arts to spend $2,500. Annual bus reimbursement to Waterloo Schools for Bus Transportation to attend a FELTS Pavilion tours during 2016-2017 school year. Fire Department, $1,760. Audiograms, hearing tests for all firemen. Leisure services, $4,275.54. One John Deere 60-inch heavy-duty rotary broom attachment. Leisure services, $7,999.95 for a new pitching machine to be utilized for youth camps and clinics, as well as for individual use. Leisure services, $15,773.40. Payment to Waterloo Blackhawks LLC for 10% of the city's gross concession revenues from 15 regular session Blackhawk games during the 2016-2017 season at Young Arena. MIS, $7,819.08 for SQL software for database updates. Police, $15,685. Annual software and hardware maintenance agreement for the L3 camera system and server. Police, $7,131.24. Place carpet at the Waterloo Police Training Center. Police, $2,400. Fence in a storage area in the property evidence building. Sewer department, $2,699 plus $300 shipping and handling. Swift Digital M10T-BTW1-MP Phase Contrast Trablit Microscope. Traffic operations, $11,980. Two controllers, MMUs, Malfunction Management Unit, BIUs, Bus Interface Unit. Traffic operations, $4,391. One camera system for the TS1 cabine. Traffic operations, $39,155.60. White and yellow traffic paint and reflective beads.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the pre-oths. Any questions on any of those items? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Those motions pass. We do not have any line item amendments tonight, but we do have the bills payment, which is
Second.
Motion a second on the bills payment. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bills are paid.
Mr. Chairman, move for adjournment. Second.
Motion a second on adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Lind?
Here.
Mr. Amis?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Weller?
Here.
All right, thank you. We have a full council this night. Good evening to everyone here. Right now, we have our moment of silence, so you can either stand or sit. Hats off as well. All right, thank you. This evening's pledge will be led by Councilman-at-Large Steve Schmidt.
Mr. Mayor, as we've come to the end of the school year, we've got a couple of different student groups here to join us tonight and lead us into the pledge. First, we have PAC 3528 Cub Scout Group, which is in the far back right-hand part of the room. They're the Cub Scout PAC from Blessed Sacrament Catholic School. And then also, we've got some of our New Burmese kids from Sacred Heart Catholic School who are going to join us. So, kids, it's all yours.
You want to step up?
Kids want to come up here? Get the door for them there, Lee Ann, please.
The flag is this way.
Ready? It's all yours.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, see you later.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. We have three items that need to be amended. One is Item 1A13. It should read a resolution approving your preliminary plans, specifications, and form of contracts, et cetera, setting the date of bid opening as June 22, 2017, and the date of public hearing as of June 26, 2017, in conjunction with the Waterloo Regional Airport reconstruct taxiway C bid package number one, FAA Airport Improvement Program 3-19-0094-0045, and instruct the city clerk to publish said notice. We'll add item number 14. It reads the same way, except it will read, "In conjunction with the Waterloo Regional Airport, bid package number two, runway 1230, pavement joint repair, pavement markings to runway 1230 and 1836, and adjacent taxiways, FAA Airport Improvement Program 3-19-0094-0045, and instruct city clerk to publish said notice." And then amend item number 10 under resolutions. It's just a typo error, it should read $3,600,000. And also, the approval of minutes, May 22, 2017, regular session as proposed.
Second. That motion has been made with a second. This is a last-minute items. Keith, if you would give us just a small explanation, I know you emailed council, but this is, we don't normally do this, but you want to explain?
Good evening, council. Keith Castwire, Airport Director. I'm sorry for the tardiness on getting this onto the council. Staff, along with our engineering consulting firm, AECom, has been under pressure to finish this project up once and for all, and get it under bid, and then receive bids, and then get the grant application out to the FAA by the end of June. So, we're hoping that with tonight's approval, we'll be able to make that happen, and get everything tied up, and submitted to the FAA by the end of June of this year.
All right, all right, thank you. So, we have a motion and an agenda and some amendments. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda. First, I'd like to call up Brian Rath. If you would please join me up front. We have a very special honor this evening. Brian has been with the City of Waterloo for over 30 years. He's been dedicated, he's been working very hard, he does excellent work for the city, so we'd like to acknowledge and show our appreciation. We don't have a gold watch, but we do have a plaque, and it says, "Presented to Brian Rath, in appreciation of 30 years of valuable and dedicated service to the City of Waterloo, Iowa, June 1, 2017." So, Brian, you want to say a few words?
Yeah, I would like to say that thank you for the service, the 30 years of service with the city. It's been a great opportunity for me, and I've had a good experience through the 30 years, and overall, good, it's been good. And it definitely, I've enjoyed it, and I just wanted to thank the city for the opportunity. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Brian. Brian is an unsung hero for the city, so we thank you for your commitment, your dedication to the citizens of Waterloo, and for the excellent service you provided, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. All right, I believe she is in the audience, so I'm going to call you up here today, Cindy. All right, so I walked over to their department and didn't tell them what I was there for, and you should have seen the look on their faces, but Cindy had the distinct honor of being named Team Member of the Month for the City of Waterloo. Cindy Young is a Clerk II in the Clerk's office, and has been with the city since March 18th of 2003. Cindy is a compassionate person who performs her job as a true servant of the public. She always puts forth a good attitude and handles her job with accuracy and efficiency. She is also among the first to step in and help when the Clerk's office is presented with any new task or job duty. When working in even the most unpleasant circumstances, she has the talent and ability to face the day with the spring in her step. It is the positive uplifting spirit that is oftentimes the first impression the public has of the City of Waterloo, and first impressions are an important factor when people think of our city. So, absolute congratulation goes to Cindy. Part of our Team Member of the Month program is to recognize and appreciate city employees that have dedicated their lives, and they do what they do. They have wonderful hearts, and they're exemplary in their performance, so we absolutely thank Cindy for all she's done for the City of Waterloo.
I just wanted to thank everybody for, when anybody comes to City Hall, we do try to treat them with respect and help them out, but I couldn't do it without my coworkers. My coworkers were all a team, and it actually is a very nice job to come to and be excited about coming to a job and just working with wonderful family.
All right, thank you, Cindy. All right, great honors, great honors, so thank you. All right, it is oral presentations time. It's your opportunity, come in to address the city council with the concerns that are on your hearts and your minds. Please step up if you have something you want us to know.
Good evening, Carol Gustafson, 209 Forest Avenue in Waterloo, mayor and council members. First of all, I want to thank you for your service and what you're doing for the city. It's important work, and it's hard work, and I hope that you know that we all realize that. I come with two things on my mind tonight. Number one is, I was very disappointed that the city did not do any kind of notification to the community, that they would not be helping with picking up any of the down trees or down branches that took place in the storm that we had several weeks ago. We don't often get 70 mile an hour winds, and when we do, it does a lot of damage. And I kept expecting the city to come and send a truck around and help pick up stuff. Well, when they didn't, I finally called the sanitation department, and the lady there said, "No, we don't do that, it's your responsibility." Well, my first concern was is that in our neighborhood, we have a lot of elderly people, a lot of people that don't have the wherewithal to be able to pick up large branches and be able to tote them out to the dump on Independence Avenue. And secondly, I thought, you know, this is such a small thing that the city could do for its taxpayers. You know, we're always howling about our taxes are too high, and, you know, what do we get from our taxes? And I really felt like this is one small thing that could be done on a very positive note, that would be really appreciated, and secondly, would be seen immediately as a positive impression. I did call Mayor Hart, and I voiced my opinion, and he said, "No, I'm sorry, Carol, we don't do that." And I said, "Well, you know, I really think that that's something that the city council needs to think about, and the city in general needs to think about, is those small little things that you could be doing that could really help change the hearts and minds of the citizens of Waterloo, and see it in a more positive way." Which brings me to the second thing that I talked with Mayor Hart about, and that was that I remember back when John Roof was the mayor, he used to have a helpline, and he would ask people to call a phone number if they needed some assistance with different things. And again, I go back to people that are disabled, people that are elderly, people that just really don't know where to go or how to fix things or to get the help that they need. And so, I would like to see us possibly put in effect a helpline. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you. Does anyone know, is there a, is it Pound 211? Is there a, is there a line out there to help, help people with different situations? By the United Way or something? Okay. If it is, we need to research and get that information up to people. All right, yes, sir?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. I don't have anything to complain about tonight, but I got up about 2:00 in the morning, and I turned the TV on, and there was a news broadcast, and it was coming out of Virginia, that a white Caucasian goes to some college, belongs to some fraternity out there, has started a hate group. And I just wanted to, it bothered me so much, I just had to get up and talk about it tonight, that hate is, should not be in our vocabulary. You know, it just bothered me. After that, they said they found two black young people dead in the area, and it's, it just bothers me, you know? I think our mentality, I don't know if I'm right or wrong, but I think we got a bad vibe going on in this country, and I hope that we don't have it in Waterloo, Iowa. And I had to get that off my chest because it's bothered me ever since I watched that program the other night. I guess dislike, things like that, you know, that's one thing, but hate is another thing. And I just had to get that off my chest, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
David Driver, 3145 West Forest Street. I went on the computer and looked at the agenda for today, and I see that on the finance portion, there was an area that it was talking about some software upgrades, and I'm not sure which two departments, because I didn't write that down. But didn't we just approve a pretty good sum of money for software upgrades? And now I see that there's another $23,500 on the docket for approval, and it's on the consent agenda and the finance area, et cetera. Then I also saw on there that the Human Resources Meeting had requested to hire two more, or I think it was two more people. Have these positions been empty? If so, in the interest of saving taxpayer money, shouldn't they be left vacant, since it seems like we're not running too bad without them?
All right, those are agenda-related items?
They were on the consent agenda, and I can't seem to be able to stand up and talk about it on the consent agenda. It was on the website.
So, we'll do this for you, which you want to talk about, where's the software?
Chris Yamblet, IT Director. We, tonight, we approved about $7,500 in software upgrades. Microsoft SQL is our database operating system, which we have a lot of applications that run on, and occasionally, there are updates to that every few years, so that's what that was for.
So, $23,500 could be for one system, the $7,500 could be for another system, because we run multiple formats of software throughout the city.
Right, I don't know what the 235 was.
Well, I'm just saying, we have more than one type of software.
Right, we have many.
Correct. All right.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, that was a total of two different pieces I saw on the finance, and I think a couple of meetings ago, we approved a pretty good sum of money for some other software.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I was, or trying to allude to, we have multiple software uses from GIS to Word to Excel to different engineering products, but we have a lot of different softwares that we actually run throughout the city. Library has their own, Keith probably has his own. That's why, but one of the things we did do is we formed a technology committee that Chris chairs with multi-departments throughout the City of Waterloo. And on that technology department, we make sure that we're not being redundant, we make sure that we aren't, you know, if they need GIS in four departments, we don't get individual licensing, we make sure that we run one license and try to save as much as we can. So, they're taking a look at that every day when that comes to, and it's a bunch of folks within here that work very closely with technology every day to make sure we're doing what you kind of may be asking, not being redundant in our spending.
Well, and I guess I would hope that someday, we would know what the total cost is, as opposed to just all this little bit, these little bit pieces, and then, I don't keep track of all of it, somebody needs to.
We do set a budget during budget time, where he lists out the costs for, he's going to spend on software and other purchases as well, and we do our best to try to stay within those parameters, but the individual portions of software, you know, that's why we have a specialist and his staff, because there's multiple, multiple different parts that they need to purchase to get up to that actual, that actual amount.
Somewhere along the line, they need to know the total for the year, thank you.
We supply the total. Once, once we go into the budget, you find out what the total that was spent towards the end of the year, and we do that, we've done that every year consistently, so I can highlight that for you if you would like, sir.
Please.
Yeah, and with our Human Resources Department. Any comments, those positions? Waste Management, you want to talk briefly about it? He asked a question about it. We need those positions, have they been vacant, are they important?
There were two positions today on the agenda, the sewer maintenance, no, it was plant maintenance mechanic and an ICT foreman position, and neither, one of them was just recently vacated when one of the current group was promoted to the foreman of that group. And the other one is trying to fill a position that a person's officially retiring.
Yes, sir.
Forest Dilvo, 1725 Huntington Road, under the city's goals, item number three, to reduce property taxes through good government operation. I heard this position that was just mentioned with Waste Management, the foreman's position, I heard at the work session that he mentioned that this could, could be combined with another position, thus saving a bunch of money. And I also saw in the paper today that we're advertising for another financial analyst. You know, if we're going to work on goal number three, we've got to start working on it. We can't keep hiring and hiring, and then someday say, "Well, maybe we ought to start cutting back." Well, we don't want to get rid of anybody we got, because they're all good people. We need to- We need to start thinking ahead of time, not afterwards. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else with comments?
My name is Robert Fag. I live at 1618 Morgan Avenue. I don't feel the best, but I wanted to come down here and get this out. I'm a little concerned about the new Iowa gun laws and when they take effect and, like I say, I have nothing against guns as such, but people with guns, that's another story. And I guess what I'm wondering is Missouri, I understand, has had the same gun laws that we're going to get like for the last year or two. I'm just wondering, have they had any extra troubles or anything like, like that that anybody knows of around here? I suppose police personnel might know.
Yes, sir. Any word about Missouri and their data? I guess we'll, I guess we'll, we'll probably be able to take a close look at that over the course of the next year in relation to what happens in the county. So, yeah, changes, a lot of changes coming, coming from the state and national, but it gives us an opportunity for us to track and see what's happening.
When is the change coming? July 1st?
I would assume so. When is it? Yeah, so when he signed the executive order, that's when the change started.
Okay, well, thank you.
And you say your name, Mr. Page? I'll tell you, you made one person happy by wearing Green Bay Packers. That guy right there is the biggest Green Bay fan ever. See, if you'd had Denver Broncos, I may have given you six minutes.
I guess I don't have to get worried, worried about being shot by him.
Maybe taken a couple shots together. All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, receive and file oral comments.
Second. Okay. We have monthly reports. I'm sorry about that. Council members, anyone want to talk about what's happening in your worlds?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to mention that on June 13th, Councilman Jerome Amos and myself are going to have a combined ward meeting at the Waterloo Public Library. All residents of Ward Three and Ward Four are invited to attend.
All right. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I have a, not, not a really report, but a report of a lot of citizens have contacted me lately about the siren problem we apparently have in town. Some of the sirens, the emergency sirens, tornado and stuff aren't working and so I would like to request that we look into that and get that deficiency fixed as soon as possible. I know Prairie Grove Park for sure doesn't work and people told me that several other ones don't work very well either. And apparently, we took that maintenance responsibility over a few years ago from whoever had it before, FEMA or, you know, the emergency people. Anyway, it's our, it's our responsibility to make sure they're running. I think Sandy does it.
All right, thank you. Really noted. Just real quickly, don't forget my Waterloo days is this week, parade on Friday and activities throughout the weekend, so if you get a chance to venture over, please do so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to commend the Waterloo Police Department. In my ward, I had a problem situation with some residents complaining about, it's just a problem house. And Chief Trolka and Captain Lebo, they, they followed up on it continually and as far as I know, it's very, you know, it's pretty much been solved. So, I want to thank them for their dedication to taking care of business for us and keeping us safe and doing a great job in our Waterloo Police Department.
And also to add to that point, this weekend, a tragedy happened, actually about two or three blocks away from my house, but across the street from my parents' house as well. And got a lot of compliments from the neighbors, my parents as well, about how quickly folks got to the spot and tried to help people feel comfortable in their homes. So, I second what our Councilman Jacobs just said.
Now, make a motion, receive and file oral comments.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. That's items one through seven and within that are the bills payment. Bills payment this week is $3,093,898.77. That's three, comma, 093, comma, 898.77.
Second. Second. A motion has been made with the second. Council questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
One question on number one, B1B, the travel request, the second travel request, two questions. Do we really need to send three people to that meeting? And second of all, I noticed we're already burning through the next year's budget to pay for it. Is that, is that kind of an unusual situation or is that wise to do?
Mr. Fonchet.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Greetings, Council. This has come up year after year after year and we have the same response, that we are able to get monies that are given to us through EEOC or either HUD to go to these conferences. And there's really no substitute for the in-person conference. While there's teleconferences, whether webinars, the information that we glean by being there in person is indispensable, but this comes every year and we hopefully, we hopefully will have the opportunity to continue to travel to these conferences.
Right. And then with regards to the finances for this, we're close to the end of the fiscal year. Councilman Lynn asks, are we burning through next year's resources already?
Michelle Weidner, Chief Financial Officer. I, this class does not occur until July, so they're getting preapproval so they can get their airfare to lower rate, but a lot of the expenses won't be paid until the 18 budget. So, we're actually trying to match it up in the right period with which budget we're using.
So, this is fiscal 18?
Yes. Hard to believe, but that's just around the corner.
And one of the things that, just to repeat to everyone here, one of the things the council and my office has been asking for is a repository for us to put in conference reports. So, we'll be expecting a report from people that are traveling or going to conferences as such, so we can find out what's going on too. So, when we do get ready to vote, we know exactly what's happening. When we may get ready to vote, don't know if it was worthwhile, so appreciate it. Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
All right, those items carried. All right, someone take number two in public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Item number two is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and that's for the request by the Waterloo Home Corporation 700, Inc. to vacate a utility easement over former platted alley located at 1955 Lock Avenue.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there any, Madam Clerk, are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council on this particular item? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion and to close the hearing and receive and file a recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, receive, file and consider and pass for the first time an ordinance approving a request by Waterloo Home Corporation 700, Inc. to vacate a 1,200 square foot easement under the former Knights of Columbus building located at 1955 Lock Avenue.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, can we just have a little explanation about what's going on here for the folks at home?
Noel Anderson, Committee Planning Development Director. I'm not sure I can tell you what's going on. The alley was vacated in 1958. For some reason at that time, the city recommended to keep an easement over the area. To date, the building has been built over the easement and there is no utilities in this easement, so we can see no purpose to keep it. I believe it's causing a cloud on the title for their sale and redevelopment of the site, so we would recommend to suspend the rules and move this ahead so they can move ahead with their project.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
That item carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to suspend the rule.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
That item carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, do you consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance?
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobes?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing on the fiscal year 2017 sidewalk repair program and trail repair, Zone Seven, contract number 914.
Second. Motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak or ask questions about this item? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, move to close the hearing and receive a recommendation of approval from Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Right, the hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt a resolution approving sale and conveyance of city-owned property located east of 751 West Donald Street in the amount of $264.10 with easement retained to walterneer and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Council, any questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed. Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Council, any questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobes?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Right, that item carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct city clerk to read bids and refer to city engineer for review.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Madam Clerk.
The estimate for this project was $272,577. We received one bid. It was from B&amp;B Builders and Supply of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $272,298.52.
Thank you. Mr. Dreyer, you got that number? Two, seven? Okay. All right. Number five, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Number five is a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of a public hearing as for the 2017 salvage asphalt crushing project. Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
All right. I think we have comments in person.
I should just be up there reading.
Just scoop Mark out the way. Just bump your elbow.
Say that one more time, sir.
Just elbow Mark out the way and just take that seat.
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. My question is, what is our use of this asphalt after we grind it up? And where is it stored?
Eric, you're on deck again. Who is this? Oh, it's Sandy. Sandy, you're on deck.
Sandy Greco, interim public works director. What we do is, after this is salvaged and crushed, we use it in alleys, we use it in parking lots, in bases, in shoulders, on our improved streets.
And then where do we store it at?
It is stored down behind what used to be Waterloo lumber. We have a big yard down there where that's where they'll be crushing it also.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else with questions? All right.
Motion to receive and file oral comments. Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications, form of contract, etc. Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed. Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Right, that item carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file and instruct city clerk to read bids. Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Madam Clerk.
The estimate for this was $59,000. Our first bidder was C.J. Moynihan &amp; Sons. They provided 5% security. They provided two bid amounts. First was $152,500. Second was $18,000. Second bidder came from Peterson Contractors Incorporated of Ryanbeck, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount, the first part was $77,000. Second bid was $2,200.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution awarding bid to Peterson Contractors, Inc. of Ryanbeck, Iowa, in the amount of $79,200 for the 2017 salvage asphalt crushing project and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Comments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, that item carries. Number six, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Item number six is a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing, and that's for the purchase of two compact trucks for the engineering department.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Right, the hearing is now open. Mr. Dreyer.
I'm now a front row boy. David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. I thought I'd get a smile on your face there, Mr. Mayor.
I would've said man, but not.
Well, okay. Again, we're gonna buy two more vehicles. I asked this question some time ago, three weeks ago or so, and I have to say I fault myself for not getting back to you, but how much equipment does the city actually own or do the taxpayers actually own in all the different departments? Not just this department or that department or whatever. And somewhere along the line, somebody has to be keeping track of these, if not the finance department, then the guys that have to do the maintenance on it. Somebody knows how much equipment we have. So I still want to have that answered so that we know whether we have a couple of compact trucks over here that we don't need to buy two brand-new ones because those are in good shape yet, and move them up and get rid of the two old ones. It seems to me like we're getting redundancy here on the different departments because they don't want that guy's old piece of crap. So we'll buy them two new ones. Somewhere along the line, there has to be an accounting in the entire system that tells us how much equipment we have, what it's doing, what it's not doing, is it sitting, do we need it or not? So that's my question, is how much equipment does the city actually own? Because we're just gonna buy two more new ones.
So when you say equipment, you mean cars?
Everything. Cars, trucks, graders, dump trucks, street sweepers.
Right.
The whole nine yards. And somebody's gotta know that.
All right.
If we don't, we should. Any, Warren Transport, I'll bet you knows where every trailer is on the road, how many are in the lot, how many tractors are in the lot, how many tractors are on the road. That's part of keeping track of your assets.
Okay.
And to me, city equipment is an asset.
Give me a little time to get to that. Yeah, I was waiting that you'd bring me a couple cookies or something.
About 10 minutes?
When you come in to meet so we can talk. I just didn't know because the last meeting, I didn't know if you were talking about.
I agree. I fault myself, Mr. Mayor, for not getting back to you and clarifying.
You are forgiven.
Thank you, sir.
That's really good.
I'll go back to the row.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dreyer. Any other comments? Second time, any comments on file?
No comments on file.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications, form of contract, etc.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
That item carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct the city clerk
to read bids and refer to interim public works director for review.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Madam Clerk.
The estimate was $50,000. The first bidder was Jerry Rolling Motors, Incorporated of Waverly, Iowa. They provided a bid on model year 2018. Their bid amount for an extended cab was $23,200. Their bid amount for a crew cab was $26,980. Second bidder was Riedel Chevrolet of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided a bid on a model year 2017. Their bid amount for an extended cab was $25,038. For a crew cab, the bid was $29,312. Third bidder was Pat McGrath Chevy Land of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. They provided a bid on a model year 2017. They provided two bids for an extended cab. One was $22,896. The second bid was $22,135. And for the crew cab, their bid was $26,351.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, seven and eight were canceled due to lack of bids, so could someone please take nine, 10, and 11?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I can take those. Can I read them and just substitute the amounts? They're just different amounts on each one?
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution to appoint Bankers Trust Company of Des Moines, Iowa, Des Moines, Iowa, to serve as paying agent, bond register, and transfer agent, approving the paying agent, bond register, and transfer agent agreement in conjunction with a $92,450 general obligation bond, Series 2017A, a $3,600,000 general obligation bond, Series 2017B, and an $8,100,000 general obligation bond, Series 2017C, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said agreement.
Second.
All right, the motion's been made with the second. Questions? Done this before. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Could someone take 12, 13, and 14?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution authorizing and providing for the issuance and levying a tax to pay for the bonds, approving the tax exemption certificate and continuing disclosure certificate for the $92,450 general obligation bond, Series 2017A. Number 13 is a resolution authorizing and providing for the issuance and levying a tax to pay the bonds and approving the continuing disclosure certificate for the $3,600,000 general obligation bonds taxable, Series 2017B. Number 14 is a resolution authorizing and providing for the issuance and levying a tax to pay the bonds and approving the continuing disclosure certificate for the $8,100,000 general obligation bonds taxable, Series 2017C. Second.
All right, the motion has been made with the second. Michelle, on number 12, do we need to add taxable to that one also?
Michelle, your chief financial officer, actually, that issue is our tax exempt issue, so it is different, and that's why you see the wording there of tax exemption certificate, which you don't see on the other two.
I tried to tell Kelly that.
It's very confusing, but we sell bonds for different purposes, and some can be sold exempt and some cannot.
All right. All right, Mr. Dreyer.
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. My question is, how do we, the citizens, acquire more information on why we need to borrow $20.94 million? And actually, on 12 through 14, also seeing that it looks to me like we, the taxpayer, are gonna get tapped for the repayment of these bonds? So that makes it more important to me as to why, that we need to know why we have to have all this money.
Right, we actually have had meetings about where we're at right now with this. So we have been meeting about it.
Mr. Mayor?
Probably we're here.
We at the council or we at?
Right. No, here, we've had meetings about these particular items already, so this isn't the first time it's been before.
Okay.
Before us.
Okay, where can I get something in writing that explains this to me so I don't forget?
Michelle, we, your chief financial officer, if we can get you a copy, I think there's a 25 cent per page charge, but we started out with work sessions. I think the first one was in February, and we had a couple of those. We held public hearings. I'm trying to remember the date of that meeting, April 25th, or May 8th, maybe. So attached to the council agenda information and available to the public is a complete listing of everything that planning and the council approved for this bond sale. So we have been issuing bonds as a lengthy process. We go through a CIP process where all our departments submit requests, those are analyzed, go through council, that's approved. We're required under state law to hold public hearings. There are notices published in the paper for that at least 10 days prior to the hearings. Then we held public hearings, and they were approved. We had the bond sale itself on May 17th, and these should be the final actions required to be approved by the city council to actually issue these bonds, and closing is expected around June 20th.
So if he wants another copy or this, just call the clerk's office.
Yes, and either Kelly or I can find him.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, the big thing I heard there was in the council packet. That's not in my packet because I'm not a council member. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Counsel or anyone, any other questions? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, thank you. 15, 16, and 17.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the disadvantaged business enterprise, or DBE, program for the Waterloo Regional Airport for fiscal year 2017 through fiscal year 2019, and authorize the airport director to sign and execute all necessary documents. Number 16, a resolution approving construction plans for storm sewer and sanitary sewer serving the Irving Square Edition and Sewage Treatment Agreement, DNR Form 28A from September 2010, and the final acceptance of construction plans and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. And number 17, a resolution approving award contract to B&amp;B Builders and Supply of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $272,298.52, and approving the bonds and certificate of insurance for the fiscal year 2017 sidewalk repair program and trail repairs, Zone 7, contract number 914, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
All right, the motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Or anyone have any questions about these three items? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
the mayor and city clerk to execute said agreement.
Second.
Second.
Alright, the motion's been made with the second, questions? Done this before. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmitt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schmitt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmitt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Alright, those two items carried. Twenty and twenty-one, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Walper?
Number 20 is a resolution approving the contract with Van de Wall and Associates for the continued work on the downtown Waterloo planning efforts, redevelopment design, riverfront development, and funding opportunities in the amount of $72,000. Authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute necessary documents. Twenty-one is a resolution approving amendment to the development agreement with Deer Creek and City of Waterloo, approved September 26, 2016, for the repayment of the infrastructure funds for the Green Belt Center to change section four from 180 days to 360 days, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign and fully execute all necessary documents.
Second. The motion has been made with the second for twenty and twenty-one. Council questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmitt?
Could I just get a little overview on what we have gotten for the last year with regards to the Van de Wall group? I'm not aware of a whole lot of activity.
No.
Having going on there?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. As you may recall, Van de Wall's been with the city for quite some time, developing the Riverfront Renaissance, in which we put forth about $26 million in public expenditures to kind of put those public improvements in place. Now, we're starting to see the private side with the redevelopment of the upcoming Upper Plaza, and the flea market sites for some new housing activities, the single-speed, the Grand Crossing development. Van de Wall has been very beneficial to the city in terms of helping to lay out those sites for the maximum land use and development, as well as kind of putting out some of the preliminary drawings with their architecture team, for us to go out for requests for bids. You know, quite honestly, I think it's helpful for us with a lot of the upcoming activities we have, and some new sites that we have now open to have them, to be able to put together some sketches, some ideas on requests for proposals. They've also been bringing forth some developers to the area to look at this area. The mayor and myself met with one last week that's interested, because Van de Wall referred them here. We also have some more steps for the Iowa Reinvestment District with the development of a marina, that I think would be helpful to have them as our consultant to help us with. So in terms of moving forward with them for one more year, I think it's very beneficial to the city to have them to put together some of the architectural drawing, some of the land use concepts, for us to try and draw more development to downtown.
What about continuity?
Obviously, you know, years ago, we put together the downtown master plan, and that's always slightly evolving, but it's remained very true to how we kind of laid it out in terms of having sites, work together, you know, with the different districts downtown, and the different symbiotic relationships from one building to the other in terms of design, and flow patterns of pedestrians and of traffic.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
No question, and I'm not picking on them, but because I asked the same question with the Alliance. I would prefer to have a list of accomplishments, not a list of what they're gonna do next year.
Sure.
So if we'd matched what they, we told them they're gonna do last year to what they've done, just you kind of repeated them, but it'd be certainly helpful for us if we kind of see it in writing.
Sure, we can do that. We meet with them once a month. They meet with the WDC to come here and talk about projects, and go over accomplishments and future projects, so we can definitely put something together for you.
And you and I talked a couple times about kind of reinstituting, and I talked with the mayor, maybe the agenda meeting, or some format like that, where we can kind of...
Go over updates.
Be updated on all that stuff. Thanks.
Alright, thank you.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yeah, I was wondering if the, I'm supposed to be getting a monthly, or every other month, kind of accounting of what Van de Wall does, and I'm wondering if maybe that could be extended to Councilman Lind, because it would show exactly where they're meeting, and, I mean, the meetings that take place happen to do with the city of Waterloo, and those come monthly or every other month. And the other thing is, and I don't need to be nitpicky, but I really don't want Van de Wall and Associates to take credit for single-speed, quite frankly, because that was a community effort made up of grassroots people to get that in there, that persuaded city officials and authorities at that point in time, as well as the powers that be beyond that, that turning that into a parking lot wasn't the best idea, that saving that historic building was the best idea. And quite frankly, if you go down there any weekend now, since they're open, you will see a hub of activity, so, not being nitpicky, but at the same time, I want credit to be given to where credit's due.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, hadn't planned on talking about this, but I see in the paper that David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street, thanks, Jim. They don't know me by now. Anyway, I saw in the paper about Cedar Falls with another projected apartment complex down there, and one of the main things they're talking about being downtown is parking. Different things I've seen that are coming up, that are we gonna start crucifying our parking downtown? We're gonna be in the same situation they are. Because, yes, we have a ramp downtown and all that kind of stuff, but that causes people to walk to a business where they'd like to park out front. This was the main thing that got the shopping malls started, was you could park and walk in and shop all different places, and go back to your parking spot. They're having a problem with parking. Is Van de Wall, or are we taking that into consideration?
Yeah, absolutely. And hopefully, within the next couple months, we can come forth with some ideas. We have to take a look at our center for ours, there's a heavy need for parking there in some surrounding places, we may be able to have some parking too. But it's, you know, it's interesting, because we do have parking ramps, but we're just not accustomed as much, some of us, to utilizing those. In the city, larger cities, Cedar Rapids, some other places, the utilization of parking ramps is there, but, you know, I'm hoping that one day, with the improvements that we're making too, within those parking ramps, that that could be a viable option for people as well, especially, and I gotta tie it back to this downtown thing on number 20, so parking is included in that conversation.
Okay, good. And again, I would say, Mr. Mayor, that a lot of my age people, the younger people don't mind walking a long ways. I'm not in that category. If I want to go to participate at a business, I want to park out front, and I don't have a handicap sticker yet.
Alright, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmitt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Alright, last item, number 22.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey. I mean, Mr. Walper.
Yes. Thanks.
My bad.
Mr. Mayor, motion to receive and file concern passed for the third time and adopt an ordinance amending the 2007 City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances by repealing Title V Police Regulations, Chapter IV Convenience Store Security, and enacting in lieu thereof a new Title V Police Regulations, Chapter IV Convenience Store Security.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, and I'm sure we're gonna have some convo about this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have supported the first two readings of this, but I have had a little change of mind on this. I really appreciate the concept and what we're trying to do here, but there seems to be much confusion as to who should have it, and who shouldn't, and what it costs, and what it doesn't cost. I guess I would like to ask the council to vote this down tonight, and if you would, Mayor, I'd like to see a new committee put together to revisit this, probably with some new ideas that didn't come up with the first committee.
Alright. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Go ahead.
One of you, you better...
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to say that I think that the police department in particular, Mr. Fangman, put a lot of effort into this. I think he tried to draw a lot of conversation, and I am aware of a lot of miscommunication, misrepresentation, misperceptions that are out there, but I too will be voting no, in hopes of getting some kind of a committee, as Mr. Walper may be addressing here, to look at it going forward, and put new thoughts, new minds, but I want to show absolutely no disrespect to Mr. Fangman and his efforts and due diligence to put that together with Councilperson Steve Schmitt. And I had several meetings, I believe, and I think it worked out in the right direction, but at this point, because of the misrepresentation, misperceptions that are out there, I would like to have another review of this, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
For the sake of unanimity, I would go along with what Councilman Walper, Councilman Powers has said, and so I will be voting accordingly as well.
Okay. Alright, well, there's no more discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I had a written statement, I'm gonna read it anyway, even though it looks like we're gonna vote no.
You should change that right now. You got some no votes, so that should change.
I know. Maybe I will.
That's true, that's right.
That's right, be careful.
It sounds like you have the majority with you, so...
Enjoy the moment.
Don't blow it. Don't call them losers, or something like that, because that could change in a hurry.
Mr. Mayor, it is my job to represent my constituents, who have overwhelmingly asked me to vote against this. The ordinance before us puts another unnecessary financial burden on our taxpayers, and is designed to fix a problem that doesn't widely exist. The crime and shootings occurring in town is happening right in our own neighborhoods, not at our local Dairy Queens. It's very simple. A vote for this ordinance sends a clear message to the taxpayers that we know how to spend their money better than they do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just say too, following up on what Councilman Powers said, I do think this is a real good example of how maybe some of this stuff should work. You know, I think originally, this thing was on a fast track, and was gonna get approved the very first night, and I think former councillor, or former mayor Manning and some other people got up and spoke, and that caused a couple of us to, or, I'm sorry, I wasn't one of them, to not waive the second and third reading, and kind of rush this thing through. I do think Lieutenant Fangman did a very good job of making every attempt to get the business community involved, but it's kind of one of those things, and that's why I think this thing going on a slow track is a good idea, because that does give people an opportunity to get involved. We had some good meetings, we had some good participation, but I do think this is probably how these things should work out, so I'm just real glad to hear that council's had a change of heart, including myself.
Once, no, I'm good. Everyone is asking what I've been thinking. Once again, there was a considerable amount of time spent trying to get at least to this point. I think the intentions were honorable, in trying to find different ways to help aid the PD and the work that needs to be done within our communities. We may end up going back to the drawing board. There's a couple of other cities out here that are doing some amazing things. We kind of modeled after, around what Cedar Rapids did, if I'm not mistaken, but we'll get back to the drawing board, maybe. But, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lind?
No.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Schmitt?
No.
Mr. Walper?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.